You don't know where that operator is. If you ask a Mission resident when they call 911 where that phone is being answered, more than likely they've already right over there.
It could be in India.
Could be.
Well, not in India.
And then their second guess would be over there, that'd be wrong too, and then finally point them out to where it really is, and they would realize that it's actually answered in Olathe. And when they call 911, they don't really care where it's answered, they just want it answered. And they really don't care who shows up and what's on the sleeve, or what's on the side of the car, or what's inside of the truck, or what's on top of the fire helmet. They want to know when they call that somebody's coming, and that they arrive in a reasonable amount of time. I can guarantee you, they don't care who shows up just so somebody shows up. And so I think when we start talking about service delivery, I would argue that I could bring in 50 residents, and let's say there are 50 residents that have moved here in the last five years, and I would guarantee you 80% of them think that's the Mission Fire Department.
Yeah.
In their mind, when they responded to their house, it was the Mission Fire Department. They didn't see it at, they don't know Consolidated Fire District Number Two from any, unless they saw and looked at the truck and then maybe thought about, you know, asking, but more than likely, they would not know.
Yeah, but the geographic location, that's where they're looking.
And some people knew, think they live in Shawnee, Michigan.
And the hardest thing is to get people to understand that the typical citizen just wants service, and they really don't care where it comes from, they just want to make sure that it comes in a reasonable amount of time, that there's somebody that's answering the phone, and that it's a quality service that's delivered. And if we kind of get over the boundaries, and understand that all of these citizens are our citizens, and our citizens are the county citizens, which are the school district citizens, which, I mean, the school district patrons, the Mission citizens, the county's residents, however you want to call these people, it's the same person. And it only makes sense that we would start thinking about how to deliver services, and quit talking about where our boundaries are. Because that's really what people care about. No, they don't care who shows up.
But are we beating a dead horse? We have brought this up a plethora of times. We even have a resolution, Mike.
Oh, I know. And you were just one vote short, and you might not be one vote short anymore.
That's right, because money's going to be the thing now.
No, I don't think we're beating the dead horse. I think that, I think this might be.
She's right that we did do the other thing.
Right.
That's a fair question to ask.
We got a bargaining chip, because Fairway might want their chief of police back.
I think that we have.
That'd be nice.
There's a roadblock here, it seems like. I don't know why we can't get over this hump. And maybe it's because we haven't beaten the horse hard enough, perhaps. I don't know.
Go ahead. What do you suggest?
I don't know, but it sounds like what I'm hearing is that we all see the same set of questions that need to be asked and explored.
Well, you know, one of the things that's different now is that all of these cities had a singular old-time mayor.
Right.
Every one of them. I mean, we had Mayor Powell for 35 years, they had, Mariam had Irene Franch, and he had Row, Tolliver, and Prairie Village, and it was their.
And I were in Ovalum Park.
Yes, and it was their kingdoms, their fiefdoms, and their cities, and they weren't going to share. We went through major warfare when it changed from Mission Chamber of Commerce to the Northeast Chamber of Commerce, you know, and it's not that way anymore. None of those old-time mayors are here, so I think the new ones probably, even though they might not want to, would be more open to it than the past.
There's no question that governing bodies, that's also where we have challenges. I mean, if you look at Consolidated, City of Mariam, the concept of Consolidated taking over Mariam's fire service, it would be cheaper, better coverage, more consistent. Do they vote for it?
No.
Absolutely not. And why? Because they didn't want to give up their Mariam firefight.
That's right.
And so, I mean, the, now, you know, definitely, you know, leadership at the top matters, but there is also work to be done in terms of not asking, but also convincing the governing bodies, you know, as a group. Because ultimately, as you eloquently pointed out, I mean, that's where the power lies. I mean, that's where the decisions will be ultimately made.
Is there any advantage?
They have shared city administrators in Pennsylvania, in New Jersey. I mean, they do. It's not uncommon.
Why, I think right now, one of the key issues is, most of the positions we're talking about, to us are not positions, they're people. And that's one of the things as communities, like it is, we value relationships. And as long as we have somebody, if you don't know who it is, it's much easier to make a decision about cutting that position, but we have people in there.
Well, we're not going to cut them, we're going to share it, is what we're talking about.
Well, when you start sharing, Sue, that limits somebody somewhere along the line.
But it might not be, I mean, you know, we may have the chief of police here, and the city administrator over in Roanoke Park.
Here's a question. When would there have, when would there be a better time than right now to talk to Fairway about, is it police?
Yeah.
Well, we're missing a public works director soon.
And so who could we talk to about public works? Who's strong in public works in the area?
Ovalum Park.
Let's talk to them.
Could we share public work services?
Well, we were already talking about snow removal, because I complain about snow removal all the time. We have artificial boundaries that we use, we do some shared streets, and I can guarantee the second call I receive after a major snow is from people that live in Mission, they cross 67th Street on Lamar, and it's like they drive into a snowdrift. Because Ovalum Park doesn't, and they, they don't realize that our border stops at 67th. And I've told Ovalum Park, there's no reason I can't continue down Lamar to 75th, it's just that we created artificial boundaries, and it makes a whole lot of sense for me to go to 75th. It makes a whole lot of sense for asking Prairie Village to stay on that side of Noll and go all the way to Shawnee Mission Parkway, instead of us jumping over, I mean, you just start looking at a map, and you're going like, this is the silliest way to do this.
Well, and that little finger of Ovalum Park, that Mariam could do.
Right.
All I was going to say is, I think from being persuasive, the thing to do is, you know, if Consolidated Fire District is really the model, and, you know, police, if that is the, if that is an area of public safety that you want to address, see, the thing that's nice about the Consolidated Fire District is that all the cities have retained their autonomy, right? I mean, you know, Fairway, Mission, Ovalum Park, Westwood Hills, but I think that, you know, you almost begged the question, and if you said, you know, we're going to set this up like Consolidated, and, you know, we know the six northeast cities, you know, police budgets, we have a plan that will save $6.5 million on an annual basis. How can you not be for it? You know, and so, I think the person that puts the plan together, that then asks for the, that asks the question, then does the convincing, probably is in as strong a position to help, you know, be that agent of change. You may not get everything that you hope for or want, but I'm telling you what, to me, that's where people are most, you know, elected officials ought to be the most motivated by, because again, if, if we operate under the assumption that residents really don't care, they just want good services, they don't care the shield, the badge, what's on the side of the truck, then it's convincing the elected officials in those six governing bodies. And the way you're going to convince them in 2011, as we continue to grind out this recession, is we have a plan that's more efficient, that saves $9.5 million. It's not the Mission plan, it's the Northeast plan, and this is the way it works. And by the way, my suspicion is, there's probably room in there, if you, you know, there's 200 people involved in public safety, maybe there's room for all 200, maybe there's room for 170, I don't know. I don't know what the details are. If you want to figure out a way to save money, I mean, that's a big idea.
It is a big idea. Sounds like a good spokesperson.
Well, we don't need each city, you know, one person.
And I worry around just sitting there.
Collecting fines for each city.
Correct.
It's six courts or how many courts?
In all reality, yes, there would be some job loss.
Yeah.
There would be. I mean, because of duplication of services amongst the cities, you can't just reassign somebody to do something, you know.
That was a court clerk.
Yeah. So, there would be some job losses.
But there's going to be, it sounds like there's going to be job losses anyway in our city governments, because we can't afford the current growth. I mean, we can't afford the current budget, so I mean, we're not cutting off anything that aren't.
I'm not disagreeing with you there, but, you know, when I go to, you know, present something to somebody, I'm going to tell them good, bad, and ugly, you know? Hey, if you try to hide the fact that, you know, that, well, yeah, there's going to be some job losses, don't hide it, tell people. I mean, you've got to be straight up.
And Lawrence makes the best point that, you know what, job loss is, is likely an inevitable part of the reality, as we look at shrinking budgets, costs that are associated with personnel that are beyond our control, like capers or KPNL, Social Security, whatever they might be. So, you know, we can either take control of it to the extent we can, and mitigate it as much as we can, but so if we lose 30 people with a consolidated effort, you know, collectively we might lose 40 if we don't do anything.
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying? I don't know why a letter, I mean, just as an idea, it may not be the best approach. I mean, Dave has articulated a nice process, so to speak, if I may, but I don't know why a letter couldn't go out from Mission to Prairie Village tomorrow and say, you're already contracting services for Mission Hills. What would, what would that model look like contracting for Mission? Just to get the conversation started.
Well, I think the Northeast mayors need to be involved, and I think they need to take the leadership for this issue.
Well, I don't disagree in an ideal sense, we have all six mayors sitting down, and you know, they do, you know, this grand plan of $6.5 million. That's ultimately where good government should be in the Northeast, but that may not be the first step. We may have to take baby steps to get there. And, you know, I don't know if that's the right first step, but I would love to see what a proposal from Prairie Village would look like for contracted services to us. I mean, they're already doing it, I don't, to Mission Hills. I would just like to see what it looks like. And I'd like to see a letter go out to the counties, saying, we would like to talk with some of your administration about a partnership with Zilpau Community. Just talk. You know, who knows where it's going to go, but why can't we start reaching out officially? Not informally when we're at a luncheon and say, hey, you know. What do you think about this?
I need to find out how Carol Marinovich did it when she created the consolidated government of Windack County. You know, joined the county and can't see Kansas Services, and said, let's just bring them all together and do it all as one.
Yeah. Quite, quite good work you did.
And then when you realize that it was like, what, only the 34th time in the history of the country.
Yeah, it's not very many.
It's ever been done, I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but it shows the challenges. The other part is that, then again, you, all right, so we still have to balance the 2012 budget.
Yes.
Right? And so, it becomes a challenge that, you know, there are a lot of things beyond our control that, you know, we have to rely on the cooperation and the consideration of others in order to make, you know, that plan work to save $6.5 million in public safety, or whatever the number is, right? But then, and then we still have the practical application of, how do we as a city make our 2012 budget work? Because, you know, state regulations still say we have to, and so we have to operate kind of in these parallel universes almost, because we need immediate savings, or immediate management, all while this conversation's going on. But I don't disagree with Lawrence, I mean, everybody speaks in platitudes, oh, we ought to consolidate, we ought to cooperate, it makes more sense, we save money, but in terms of what really gets done, in the time that I've been on this council, practically, very little.
And when you look, and Will said it 30 minutes ago, and it's the part that you have to figure out, how do you create sort of this acceptable loss on the emotional side? Because this isn't about taking an equation, if you're not objectively, should you do this? You'd get the answer every time, do it, do it, do it, do it. It's that emotional attachment that you have to get people to kind of give up. I keep taking the approach, it's about service. It's about service.
And of the number of people I've talked to up here in the Northeast, you know, on appointments and things like that, they still, you know, wonder, you know, why it's the little cities, and, you know, and each one's got a public works department, and a police department, and a fire department, and, you know, because sometimes they don't realize, and, you know.
I still go back to Connie's comment, when you have a strong mayor, former government, I think you can do research, and you can do some things, but I think you get buy-in from Laura before you proceed on any fast.
Well, yeah, obviously, I mean, even if we didn't, I mean, we've shown, as a council, we've shown respect to Laura on every decision, in every major direction we go, and I wouldn't suggest we diverge off of that path now. And you bring that up, that gets to the practical matter, you know, Dave talked about, we have the practical matter of budget and balancing the 2012 budget, we have the practical matter of, if we wanted to initiate a conversation, who does it? And the practical matter in this city is, this council probably can't send that letter to the county. It's probably going to come from Laura's. She's got to approve it. She's got to say, we will, as a city, send the letter, because we're a strong mayor, former government. So, I mean, we can't send the letter tomorrow to Prairie Village, Georgia, the county, without Laura saying yes.
But Laura acts on the direction of the council.
On, there's some matters, there's some matters, some matters technically yes, some matters technically no.
Well, are the budgets run the same if you were a city manager versus a city administrator?
Yes.
No. No, it'd be, it's different Ovalum Park.
Well, you have to vote on.
Lennox is more like us.
He's a city manager, isn't he?
But our city administrative form here looks more like Lennox as a city manager.
Yeah, I mean, you have to vote on to become a manager, and it's.
I mean, if the Finance Committee, it was to make the recommendation, I'm just hypothetically, that we were going to close the pool this year, she could not override that.
More than likely.
She could.
It would probably have to be in the form of an ordinance amending your budget, which you would veto, because that's how you would do it. Because you would reduce the appropriation so that you didn't open the pool. I mean, that's the policy method. Because you've already appropriated money to operate pool.
But you could get the majority of the vote of the council, wouldn't take, then she couldn't.
But we don't have all the information. How much does it cost to run the pool this summer? I mean, without those tangible numbers.
Well, and I, exactly.
It's just one example.
I mentioned that, that we would need to.
He's just asking.
I'm just, I'm just using this scenario.
If we're going to gain $5,000 over a summer and cut off contracts, risk, you know, people being, you know, I think we need to look at that.
Risk litigation, because we have contracts with people, and there's not a, and if we say we're going to cease to operate, then there's some sort of demand that they'll have, or some way of retribution that we have to pay them for getting out of this contract. I mean, all those things have to be factored into it.
Well, and that's example, I mean, Will's specific example, he was talking about the process, but he's also done with 2011 budget, and quite frankly, you know, I'm, not, not that your idea isn't, isn't a valid one, I'm more interested in the 2012 and beyond budget. So, I'm more.
I'm worried about today, starting today.
That's, well, I'm worried about starting today for the 2012 budget.
Because if we don't start today, then 2012 is going to be, that budget's going to be done here in the next few months.
Well, that's, yeah, I'm worried about starting today on the 2012 budget. I mean, if we can come to the 2011 budget.
But we got to start acting.
Yes.
How we would work on, how we would spend the 2012 budget today.
Yes, I agree completely.
I mean, it's not like, you know, well, I'm going to get a pay cut next year, so I'm going to go ahead and spend all my money this year.
Yeah.
I mean, you start, you start clipping your coupons, and start acting like you're going to be not having as much money next year.
And then I'm going to give you kind of the obvious things that happen. You understand that we will have a roomful of people from the Mission swim team. I mean, these are the things that you have to sort of accept as you go forward.
But you know, if you don't have money for X, Y, and Z, you got to do something.
Correct. Now, I'm going to come back to this and tell you, remember, I took the most conservative approach.
I told you early on, that is the hazard, taking a $9.5 million approach, because it breeds conversations like this, and it talks about losing. And so, all I'm saying is, and I don't mean to jump, speak out of school here, I appreciate a conservative budgeting approach, but understand the hazards that goes along with it.
So, we've had a lot of. You risk those, because the problem is, I can't come back to you and say, you know that number I gave you that we were way off on?
Right.
We can't make up ground in the opposite direction. We've had a lot of good conversation, and Debbie's brought up the practical point that the mayor, and Connie as well, the mayor needs to be involved, we all agree on that. Will's asking process questions, how do we move forward? I'm kind of stuck wanting to know that answer as well, is how do we move forward on exploring the dialogue that's been started tonight? Well, I think the first thing that you do, you bring back the resolution that said, if we got six council members that wanted to, we initiated a discussion about public safety.
Yeah.
We have models that are out there that you can follow. We have a model that actually works in this county. I mean, I just come back to this, when people call 911, whether they're in Roanoke Park, whether they're in Mission, whether they're in Westwood, Westwood Hills, you understand they're calling the same 911 operator. And whether that 911 operator calls Mission, or Roanoke Park, or whoever to go respond, the back office of this is already being innocents treated like we're all in this together, because we already share that phone call. We're already sharing that phone call service.
So, we, I'm sorry, I mean, whether people like the innovation that we have been, I think, on the cutting edge of over the last several years, and many of the things we've done, I think it's natural that we would assume the leadership position on sharing, a consolidation, a combining of public safety. And the other thing I would tell you is, I think it would be watched closely in the five county metro area, because Northeast Johnson County is not the only place in this five county metro area that is unique to small suburbs that are on top of each other. It certainly exists on the Missouri side as well, and other places, so, and let's be clear too, I think the mayor would be in agreement with this. I mean, I've not heard her ever say, well, it's a bad idea to explore consolidation of services. And so, I, you know, practically speaking, I think there's a, we just need to find out what the path is, and start the conversation, start the dialogue.
There's got to be some way, or, and, you know, when figuring out the consolidation of services, whether the model, the new model is created, or is proposed by, like, the county, or, you know, the county takes a look at the geographic area and says, well, you should have this many officers, and this many people for public works, and, you know, in order to handle this number of streets and things like that. You know, I'm sure there's some kind of statistical models for stuff like that. It's just a matter of, you know, we would have to utilize something like that, and, you know.
And we'd have to be willing, if we go down that path, to live with the results too. Because, because you know what, that model could come back and say, is, I mean, you guys are underfunding public safety by the tune of $10 million, and you need 20 more officers on the street. Or it may come back and say, you're overspending by $6.5, and you've got 30 too many officers, or something, you know what I mean? So, there, just, you know, there's a, there's a balancing act, but.
But that's those facts we need to be looking at. We can't do it, you know.
I'll tell you, on the dollars, in the year of studying the budget this past year, I believe the true dollar savings is on the capital side, not on the operations side. You know, we can talk about, you know, officers, and we may be on or off the ideal number, I don't know, but at the end of the day, it's probably more on the capital side of the public safety side. If you talk about parks and rec, it's the $20 million that Prairie Village would pay to build a community center, and the $6 million price tag on our outdoor pool that was talked about a couple of years ago. It's really more on the capital side where you find the savings, I believe, not on the operating side. But we have some serious capital issues facing the city, as all the cities in the Northeast do.
If you went through the city categorically, and looked at every facet, you've got the big items like the pool, you've got 51% of the properties in this community are rental properties, you've got landlords out of compliance. Do we not have a percentage of landlords out of compliance?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, that may be a little bit of the budget, but it's, it's relevant to me.
So, it sounds like there's a lot of folks around this table that agree, it sounds like we think the mayor agrees.
It sounds like an exciting 2012 budget.
I bet so.
Tell you what, if you missed this work session, you're going to be playing catch-up the entire.
In Connie's reference, we already passed a resolution in October, saying we want to have this conversation on shared services, so we don't need to, in my opinion, pass another resolution. I mean, this same council.
We live up to the one that's on the page now.
Yes.
I would, I would think that, if some of the other cities were, were serious about getting into a dialogue, if there was a meeting of all the council members, and all the mayors, and all the cities involved, as a discussion type, type thing, I think it would be very productive.
I will tell you, there are cities that are already having this discussion in the Northeast, that are already formally met, and we have not asked to be at that table. So, those, there's no if about it, there is those conversations happening, not enough, but they've been started.
But I think if it was, if it was a collective of everybody, I think everybody would be going.
Can you imagine? A room full of.
I mean, I tell you what, though, this.
But you have to put a hard stop.
Very important people.
You have to put a hard stop time on that meeting.
This conversation, having this conversation on shared services is a lot more pleasant than a conversation on tax increases, I'll tell you that much right now. I'd much rather be at this table than talking about raising taxes.
If you're really interested in this, I mean, you know, from a selling or convincing, however you want to describe it, I don't care, I mean, you can, you know, you can beg people into this question, I mean, well, you can either raise your mill levy by, you know, 10 mills, or you can consider consolidation that provides the same level of service, but delivers it more efficiently, and you can actually get to lower your mill.
Well, and it needs to be, it needs to be explained in a fashion, whether people like the transportation utility fee or not, it's a dedicated fee for a specific activity, where infrastructure was addressed to us numerous times, person by person by person, that it was a necessary evil that needed to be taken care of, we listened to them, and we did it. You know, there's rationale behind closing the pool, because we need the money to help support the community center, whatever, however we deem appropriate.
Well, I'm not necessarily even saying that, I'm just saying, if we, if we did not utilize the pool, the money that was, that was to be spent on that, I wouldn't want it absorbed by something else, I would want it basically satisfied.
Back to that, $200,000 is supposed to be spent every year on maintaining the community center.
Or, okay.
Supposed to be saved every year.
Maintaining the community center. But we will probably, you know, if, there would probably be a need for a condensed version of the outdoor pool, a smaller version, in the future, but to continue, you know.
I'm even more outlandish, I would say that.
You are more outlandish.
Yeah. Blue Valley, Blue Valley Reg Park or Recreation District, which is administered through the Blue Valley School District, I mean, when you start looking at their Parks Recreation District, which is Aletha, Ovalum Park, Leewood, there's, there's examples of shared park services that work today.
Yeah, very well.
And the question is, why, why wouldn't we try to work with the Shawnee Mission School District, and bring their fields and their facilities into play, and all of a sudden you have more pools, and you have more tennis courts, and you have, I mean, then you have, I mean, it changes the whole discussion. And there's models we have in our county that have worked really well when set up that way.
So, it's not just maintaining the same level of services, it may be increasing the level of services, but doing it in a more efficient way.
Right. All of a sudden, those fields that aren't used in the summer, usable in the summer, they become part of your program.
I just, I just want to simply hope, or hope that if people realize that we cut something, that that's not going to be absorbed into something else that is frivolous.
That grows. And then, one last thing that I wanted to show, and it's something, because we always get a lot of questions about, you know, you spend a lot of money on infrastructure, and I'm always saying, yeah, but there's a really good reason we spend a lot of money on infrastructure. And I thought I would put this one up, this is a pretty good example. When we tore down Mission Mall, the actual value of the property went up.
We did tear it down.
When the developer tore it down.
Thank you.
The value of that property actually went up, because the mall improvement was a disincentive to the property, it actually was hurting the property. Here's an example of JCPenney Call Center. 5665 Fox Ridge, you see it off Mid-Cap, buildings 40,000 square feet. That's what the buildings were.
It doesn't look that good either.
That is what the land's worth.
According to the appraiser.
To the appraiser.
That's what I'm buying.
And what I would argue is that we, we saw that with Hurst Jones. Land values are worth more than the building values. If, if we weren't making investments in streets in stormwater and sanitary sewer, if we weren't relocating power lines, those land values would not be at those numbers. The reason those land values are at those numbers is that we have an infrastructure program in which we're trying to maintain and improve the infrastructure. It's the infrastructure that drives the land value.
Right. 'Cause wasn't there, I mean, the mall site before it was torn down, and then there was a value with the mall torn off or, or raised, then there was another value once all the stormwater mitigation, and the numbers just went like this, right?
It, they went up, and then it went back down a little bit. And then what you're gonna see is, after the FEMA floodplain maps get reviewed and certified, the property comes out of the floodplain, and then it will achieve another value, which will be higher than its current value. And the, the thing that sort of gets missed as you're, as you're trying to make all these stormwater improvements, and as you're trying to move land out of the floodplain, is that those things are being reflected in the community and reflected in dice. We have a lot of old buildings that are set on valuable land, and the land's only valuable if you have roads and infrastructure that supports the redevelopment of the property. And if you remember, we had Olson come in and do an assessment of all of our utilities to make sure we can support whatever got built in the West Gate. I mean, all these things compound, and they help maintain that land value. I mean, our values are being maintained by the fact that we have valuable land, not that we have valuable roads.
How much is she asking for that now?
Two point five million.
Oh, she's gone down a lot. Like about five million.
Yeah, I'd argue one million's a steal. There's no way that's land's worth, it's worth a lot more than that. We're not getting tax dollars off of it, which is frustrating.
Right.
That the appraiser has it so under-valued, but there's nothing we can do about that, I don't think.
That is correct. But those are the things that happen typically in areas that are redeveloping. Land has more value, value than the buildings that are on the land.
What was the total acreage of the Hurst Jones property?
I had made a great skateboard bar.
About six point two.
Yeah, we don't need a skateboard bar.
This is, yeah, this is right at five.
Just give it up, Will.
He's been praying for that for years. He wants to-
She gets a new yardage.
In mind of everything, seriously. Well, that's all I have.
Well, I think this was a very good discussion.
So, robust.
Robust.
Could we get those figures though, please?
And if, you could give that to Martha, what's your notes? I can have her type it up.
Do you wanna, do you wanna figure out savings on the pool this week?
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take hers, and I'll take the comments that I heard.
And, and we do have something on the-
We have a resolution that says that we're supposed to be out looking for a consolidation.
Shared services.
Shared service, cooperation and shoot.
Anything that could drive the, the cost of services down.
When can we, when can we see the pool numbers?
Uh, probably next Wednesday at the Community Development Committee.
Okay.
From what I understand-
It'll, it'll be the twenty-eighth of April, right? Is it, or is it May? Oh, my gosh.
It's May fourth.
Already May.
Michael, what I understand, the baby pool, or the smallest pool, isn't in bad shape at all. Is that correct?
No, it's not. The problem is our bigger pools, the lat pools and stuff, there's big holes that fall out.
The problem is that they're all connected too, so.
Yeah.
You know what would be interesting, to see how much money we have spent on that pool.
It'll have to be cleaned.
They'll all get shut down.
If we had to think, how much money we have spent on that pool in twenty years.
Oh, my gosh, that would be-